Good evening. Camera, come over to me. Keep coming. All right, great. Good evening. It's Tuesday, September 9th at 7:00 PM. This is the Frontier School Committee meeting, and this meeting is recorded. I will be calling the meeting to order, and the first thing on the agenda, I'm calling it to order, is reorganization. So I will entertain a motion for a chair. I have a nomination for Missy Novak. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and second for Missy. Any other nominations?
I nominate Bob Hall.
All right. I have a first for Bob Hall. Any seconds for Bob Hall?
Seconds.
All right. I have a first and second. Any other nominations? All right. So what we'll do here is we will do a vote for Missy's chair for the first, and we'll do a second round vote for Baba's chair. So all in favor for Missy's chair? All right. Those in favor for Baba's chair? Those in favor of Baba's chair? All right. Missy, you are the chair of the region. I hand the meeting over to you.
Thank you. Next, I think we'll take nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Olivia for vice chair.
Any other nominations for vice chair, Bill?
Bob Hall.
All right. All in favor of Olivia for vice chair? All right. Congratulations. Again, in this position as vice chair.
I nominate Bill for secretary.
Ah, there we go.
He does not accept.
Any other nominations for secretary? I would... Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, perfect. I will second that. Any other interest in serving as secretary?
Is there anybody else on that school committee members?
Nope.
I don't think so.
Yeah, Damian said he might be late, depending on his flight, and Phil said he can't make it. Sorry.
Can I just make one comment about secretary job?
Yes.
There are minutes, and there are minutes. We sometimes have minutes that turn into hours. If you look at our official order and the definition of minutes, those in attendance, votes taken, those present in voting, hold on there. Not dictation. It's not a blow-by-blow, word-by-word synopsis of what happened at a meeting. You should be able to boil minutes down and the actions taken, and the people in the room taking those actions, and all the other stuff. It's not... It's recorded for a reason, but that's not what minutes are. Who was ever doing it? They should endeavor to get it right.
You want to do it again this year and so you can get it right and show us off?
I never said I had it right.
I said you got to get it right. Right, gotcha. Does Jess have a second?
She does. She has a second.
Now she doesn't want it.
I know. All in favor of Jessica as secretary? Jessica is serving as secretary. Thank you very much. I know this is a thankless space that not a lot of people would like to do, and I really appreciate you stepping up. Now you only have to have 10 words to answer.
Question?
Yes.
Does Reckel have like a template for Jess to...? Okay.
I kind of maybe gave her a heads up that that should be where it goes to. So she sent it over, right?
Yes.
Perfect. Do you have a question? So as we did last year, I'll start with a statement of our operational goals. Mission statement as a way to kind of center us for the meetings that the school committee's primary responsibility is to establish those purposes, programs, and procedures that will best produce the educational achievement needed by our students. The committee is charged with accomplishing this while also being responsible for wise management of resources available to the school district. The committee must fulfill these responsibilities by functioning primarily as a legislative body to formulate and adopt policy by selecting an executive officer to implement policy and by evaluating the results. It must carry out its functions openly while seeking the comments of the public, students, and staff in its decision-making process. So I think that we have a couple of minutes to approve for the first order of business June 10th.
Me.
Oh, thank you. You know what? And I... That's okay. No, I put it up here.
Okay.
Yeah, because I... Yep. You know what? I jumped the gun because it wasn't on here. All right. Tell me if I'm missing something. I pulled this off of what we have. And Phil said that he would... He really said I could put him anywhere, but I told him I would put him where he was before. So we've got a budget subcommittee. Last year, we had Bill, Bill, Mary, and Keith. Is everybody interested or able or willing to? Anybody else interested in serving on that space? Not that...
And if somebody's not here, too bad. Because they're going to be on that board.
Phil gave me the... I don't feel like I'm throwing them under the bus, putting it on. He did, in fact, tell me that he would be happy to do that. So I joked with him that I would put them on all the committees. So we'll go ahead with appointing Bill, Mary, Keith, and Phil to the budget subcommittee. We have the negotiations team. But just to jog everybody's memory, for last year was Phil, Chris, Bob, and Olivia. So, yeah, go ahead. You're okay with... And so I think though, Chris, we need a representative from Sunderland. Well, that's... Yeah, it's a relatively...
Actually, let me put a pause in there. And this is serious. I'm actually being serious. Because we are going to be talking about insurance, there is a possibility we can negotiate insurance if we change policies. So there is not a do-nothing year as negotiation has been for some years. It could... We hope it won't be. Hopefully, we know work, but it is a possibility it will be.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Diane. So I've got Diane from Sunderland as the representative on the negotiations team, Phil from Conway, Bob, you're okay serving from Wheatley, and then Olivia from Deerfield. For the Frontier Capital Improvement Committee, last year, we had Bob, Keith, Jared, and Damian. Okay, continuing on that.
You need to change Jared up.
Yep. So we need a representative from Conway.
What is this job due?
Oh.
Let's scare her.
He's a kid.
Are you going to say what it is? It's a... We basically do... We have meetings with one select board member from each town and one school committee town to review the capital improvement list and about what we're going to try to do this year. We'll have a lot of conversations regarding a parking lot this year.
Great. That sounds fine. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. And Keith, you were the collaborative representative last year. Would you like to continue to do that? Or you want to see if anybody else... Is anyone else dying to be the collaborative representative?
I think Keith will do a great job.
Keith did do a great job.
Yet experience counts.
Thank you. Keith is the collaborative representative again. I believe, Jessica, you expressed some interest in serving as the Mars representative.
I would compliment my rural schools.
I would be more than happy to allow you to have a compliment to your rural schools advocacy and appreciate your work on both fronts with that.
I'm so sorry. Can I ask what I'm Mars? Sounds like you're headed outward. Got it. Great, cool.
Thank you. We've got the Policy Review Committee, which last year was Bob, Phil, Olivia, and Chris. So Bob, you're okay with being on that again. Phil has already offered up that he would continue on that. Olivia, see you nodding. You would accept that role. And then we need a Sunderland representative. Yeah, all right. Way to jump in here, Diane. I appreciate that. And sickly, Bob and I did that last year. You okay with continuing?
It's not like it's been...
We had... Yeah, I mean...
What, we did once last year? Twice?
Maybe three, but...
I remember twice.
Maybe you're right. Maybe it was twice. Yeah.
And to explain it to you, it's a sick bank that two of us plus their representatives, whoever it is, looking for extra days. It's in a sick bank, which is... That's all changed too, if I remember right.
But yeah, that's kind of at my shift a little bit.
I was just saying, it's a sick bank that you ask for some extra days to help you out.
Pull their six days together if somebody else needs more. Never sit. And kind of a tag on to all of those would be that in a couple of weeks, the 24th, am I right? 24th of September, we've got an off-site... We officially called it a professional development at the Sunderland Library. So everybody, if you haven't already stuck it on your calendar, 5:30, I believe, on September 24th at the Sunderland Library, we intend to bring everybody together to do a little bit of education about how are some of these roles taken up in the school committee? So kind of broaden brief explanations. It was really nice last year. Thank you for everybody accepting, or if you're not here, just taking the appointments. And I will move on to the minutes from June 10th. Or... So let's... It bothers me. Let's go in... Can we go in date order? Do February 11th?
Yeah. I typed up in the minutes already what the motion would be, but essentially, the minutes from February 11th stated that the funding source for the fire alarm panel was going to be paid by a town assessment, and we actually use rural aid. So we need to correct that for our records and for auditing purposes. So we're looking for a motion to amend the minutes February 11th, 2025, to change the funding source for the fire alarm panel replacement project from town assessment to rural aid, which was under the new business section D of the February 11th minutes.
So moved.
Oh, my God, I was trying to read that while you're typing, and I was like... She was like, I can't. It's the letters.
Oh, Eric approved it.
Sorry, that was very choppy.
All right. And Olivia, seconds. All in favor of amending and approving the minutes from February 11th? All right. So yeah, I would say since you weren't here yet, so... Yeah.
What I'm seeing?
Sure.
Okay.
Motion passes up. We need a motion...
Make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from June 10th, 2025, revise February 11th, 2025, and May 13th, 2025 minutes second.
We need to fix the May 13th before you can vote on them.
That might be...
So May 13th...
We can't do it as a whole chunk. So right...
No, they should be done individually.
Yeah, so we just did the February 11th. So we would need... Would you like to revise your motion to include just the amend and approve the minutes from May 13th?
We have changes on May 13th?
We do.
Okay. So we have to amend it first, right?
Correct.
Okay. And we haven't accepted... All we did was accept the changes. We didn't accept it as minutes yet after the change.
We did it... Well...
Or was that part of it?
You accepted the amendment.
Is that accepting the minutes then? If we accept...
Well, the minutes were already accepted.
They'd already been... Yeah.
In February, we made 13 changes to the...
Yeah, so May 13th, we made three motions under new business for capital projects, which was related to auditorium lighting, the van we purchased, and the air conditioning in the middle school section of the building, I think. So the motions were made, but there was no vote noted. I know we voted on it in the meeting. I watched the recording again, but there was no vote mentioned. So it has to state that it was voted, and it was voted unanimously. And I believe there were 10 members in attendance that day.
So...
The vote wasn't recorded in the meeting. So even though we can watch the recording, there wasn't a vote. It wasn't in the minutes. So because we're changing the minutes, you have to vote that. So it's all...
It was recording in the...
It was recorded as a video, but it was not recorded in writing. And it has to be in writing for the auditor.
So we need to amend...
You voted 10-0 to... You voted 10-0 to approve those three things.
So the minutes of May 13th, 2025, were amended to include that the motions made under new business, sections B3, B4, and B5, passed unanimously by vote of 10 school committee members with no opposition.
So moved? And we're just going to vote on May 13th right now?
Right, and we're just voting on the...
We'll come back to June 10th.
And then, which is just the three minutes. Any discussion about the amendments? All in favor of amending the minutes stated? You were there. Yeah.
That's good, because I didn't want to pull these here.
Any discussion about the minutes?
Yeah. Might have been a typo. Things that I said that I was having everything just tied up in a neat bow. Super demented that I said things were tied up in a neat bow, but I was just having... If we could just put that negative in there.
Yep, there we go.
But I don't... I'm making up that instead of saying that I appreciate everything is in a neat bow, I believe that I said that. I appreciate that every... Even though it's not, I appreciate that we're reporting the differences. I would second your motion.
All in favor of the amendment to the minutes from June 10th? And we'll go back to the original motion to approve the minutes from June 10th as amended?
I have a question.
Yes?
It's related to Bill's point, because I've never seen minutes like this. But basically, do verbatim, especially the chapters for the discussion. And I don't know if that's the standard practice to do that. Or it seems to me, and certainly I may be not proper for it, then this would be one sentence that said, you know, light respect for discussion was had, that that was, you know... A piece of language is what it is. But not this lump of stuff. So I don't know.
I think that's the way we suppose. So this is a prime example of that. If you try to get it didactic in the meeting, you're going to be correcting everybody. I didn't say that. Motions, votes, people present, vote, end of story.
And we have it recorded. Somebody was going to have to see the entire conversation that Phil had missed.
Would you like to make a motion to shorten that to...
You know, we could table that and then have the meetings modified to remove opinions stated, and then just come with a new cleaner version. Because I think it's throughout, right? It's throughout that there's a lot more editorial than... Because you're exactly right. It's like, because then if you miss everything, if you miss one thing and one person... I thought I said something that, you know, that can remove... We can remove all that and bring that back to be voted so that's a clean... Does that make sense to do? I think it might be a lot cleaner than trying to do it edit on a fly, whatever, everybody having it in front of them, and then they can agree to that being what the minutes are. So if you have to do that, I can have... I can go through it and clean that up.
So we're just going to table?
Table those minutes. I do... You made a statement about recordings. So recordings, according to the law, are not kept indefinitely. We keep them for three years, and then we drop them because they take space on our server. We actually... The law says that you only need to keep them until the minutes are... The video recordings until the minutes are approved by the committee. I said, you know, I talked to IT, and they said, we can do a couple of years because sometimes we have to go back. But I'm just letting people know that, you know, our COVID minutes are slowly getting deleted. I mean, those are some beauties I like to keep for history, but we don't have the server space. And so just kind of putting that out there.
Do you need to vote on table?
Yeah.
Move the table and move the minutes to June 11th.
All in favor of tabling the minutes from June 11th?
Thank you.
It's June 10th.
June 10th, thank you.
Is that what I said? You said 11th.
It's all right. Got you back.
Just to be clear, you meant June 10th. Right, Bill? Just to be clear, you meant June 10th?
Yes, absolutely.
And Jessica, in case you didn't catch it, I just saw Damian hop on. Yeah.
I did, thanks. Can you hear me?
All right, so that being tabled. Shelley, are you ready for...
Ready, sure. Okay, so I emailed you all the warrant totals. Bob did sign them this morning. These are for bills paid in June, July, and August. So there were 84 warrants reviewed and signed. The total for the record was $7,536,814.01. I had said in my email I didn't send you the monthly expense report. Typically, this time every year, I'm letting you know that we're still working out links in the system, particularly with payroll as we get everyone set up to the correct accounts. Brenda Antis retired from payroll after 32 years in the district. We have a new hire that we've been onboarding, and it's certainly come with some challenges. So the reports look a little wonky right now, more wonky than usual under salaries and wages. So I didn't want to give you information that was invalid and was just going to confuse you. So next month, I will have accurate reports for you. Couple of things to talk about in FY '26. I don't usually have concerns for us to discuss, but there are two things that I want to mention for the current year budget. One is the health insurance. We're going to talk about that in greater length later on, but that will have a financial impact for Frontier. We are talking about it at all of the school levels, but for the elementary schools, the impact hits our towns, not the school budget. So for Frontier, it's the opposite. It will hit our budget directly. The other concern is out-of-district placements. So these are students who are students of our school. We don't have programs to meet their needs. They need specialized services or programs, so we send them to another school. Our out-of-district placement costs are up about $200,000 over budget from what we anticipated last year. We had a student move in district that we didn't anticipate, and then we had a placement change for another student. So Karen Farandino, the Student Service Director, and I met today. We reviewed all of the numbers. We're going to see some circuit breaker extraordinary relief. So circuit breaker is reimbursement that we receive for special education services over a certain dollar amount. So we'll get some money directly back this year, and then we'll see some additional money next year. So I'm looking closely at what the actual budget impact will be. I'm hopeful that we can come up with it from other funding sources, but that all just has a ripple effect, and this is going to be a multi-year issue as students continue to be our responsibility for likely two more school years. So wanted to put that on the radar. They're big hits, which is really why we're talking about it. If it were $1,000 or $2,000, we would just find the funding within other sources within the budget. But you'll continue to hear more from me as we navigate that situation. Audit starts next week, so we're just wrapping up, closing out fiscal year '25. They've already come in and done some testing of expenditures that they do every year, making sure that we're paying things in the proper fiscal year, that we have the proper documentation. Now they'll really start to dive into the financials, which leads into our excess and efficiency certifications. So my goal is... Maybe we'll know what our certification is by the end of November because that money will be important for some of these conversations, potentially for health insurance, also for capital projects. The parking lot is coming. We have place two of the roof coming. So those kinds of things. I'll keep you up to date on that. And I think that's it for big stuff. Any questions? Thanks.
Questions to come later. Questions to come later.
Yeah.
Sure. You got the principal report?
Yeah, so I wanted to just highlight a couple of staff that have joined us as teachers this year. So we've got Steve Gordon, who's joined us at the law firm. So he's a special education teacher. Elizabeth Liz Taylor, who's also joined us. She's a high school special education teacher. I also wanted to highlight we've got a number of new positions that we have at our rent this year and will come from most of the next three years. They're all grant-funded, like we said, for the Mariposa, which is funded completely by... So we have a part-time assistant counselor that works with us in addition to our other counselors that work with us two days a week. We just found out today that we've got a wellness coach that's going to be joining us. Uh, we just found out today that we've got a wellness coach that's going to be joining us. Uh, we're in partnership with uh, we're doing, we're part of studying the GH. Uh, and they're, they're having um, wellness coaches coming uh, come into certain schools uh, to help out with that sort of administration. To help deliver social emotional. They're gonna be working, uh, doing sort of practice circles as well. We're gonna be having them two, joining us two days a week. Uh, we've got a grant from Furcog, uh, Frontier Regional Council of Governments and we are, well, we just hope for a family outreach on. Uh, so we're hoping to get some good candidates for that. Uh, the Maricor member, um, uh, we had a different one last year. We got a new one coming in this year. Uh, she will be joining us four days a week and she's gonna also be helping out um, with uh, with sort of practices. We continue to have great, um, basically which is uh, we can, which is also grant funded, for mental grants. Uh, and this is a, it's a great program. It's a students that have extended absences due to either illness or hospitalization or contact. It provides some. Uh, and we're also going to be bringing that uh, one of our former staff members. Who's going to work with us part-time to help uh, administer changing perspectives. Career. So we've got all of these things happening, just to help support uh, helping wellness among students, so we'll go to the foresight. Professional without, we started this Friday. Uh, and so uh, we're going to be doing a lot of PD this year, uh, including training on AI. Uh, preventing sexual violence, early education, uh, anti-bullying, uh, professional learning communities and. Also I wanted to just note that I've attached an IT support to the email that I sent you today. They give us one beginning every year. If you take a look at it. Uh, it'll basically uh, lay out for you where our students were accepted. Uh, and where our, our students are just going to school. Um, and there's a lot of students that, so if you have a chance to go look at it. Uh, and the last thing I just wanted to formally invite all members of our school committee because. Because this is, I know that Missy talked about, you know, school policies and policy and do all of these things. Um, I, I do want to invite you to our school, uh, if you ever have the opportunity to come visit our classrooms. It's really a wonderful opportunity. There are so many amazing things that our teachers do, that our kids do. Uh, I had the opportunity to, to go through all of our classrooms. Uh, last week and the things I saw were just very, they're, they're really important. So. I just want to extend that invitation to all of you. If you're ever interested in coming to visit, you want to come. Go watch classrooms with us. Get more than, just reach out to me and I. So, um, that being said.
George, I have a couple of questions. Um, what's the, um, do you know the day for that? I came one year for that art, um, like open. Yeah. Do you know the date that that's?
It's usually the day. So it's going to be.
If they're like, open, like those are such a great, easy times where you're like, you don't feel like you're like. A weird adult sneaking in, opening it on a classroom, but.
And that's, that's only for families as well.
Yeah.
And you can have, uh, if you have this class here, you know, I know it's hard to focus this right today. Um, but, but it's a great opportunity. And we're hoping also, so we've got to be able to handle it. Uh, we're also, I talked about it earlier. We are going to, we're going to showcase, hopefully we'll showcase a lot of our, very, 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 very.
Yeah, whatever that date is, you can toss that out. It was such a lovely thing to, to be able to come and be able to, be able to see such great stuff that they were doing. Do you know if they grant funded positions are state or federal? It's all, it's all.
They're mostly close to state and they're, um. There's a lot of medical health grants now, which is awesome. If that's what we've been able to get. And people really like our school. Um, they'd like us to respond, um, follow through. We have populations that need services that they're providing, um, and so really, but then so fortunately helps. What we already have. And some of these grants are, are ten-year grants, um, so they're not going away. There's a couple of them that are three-year grants. This is, this is, this is COVID peak, so they're still lingering on our, our, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Only to jump on what George said, two things. One is that please look at that, um. The uh, graduation report. I mean, it's kind of, to me, it kind of shows what we're doing and. Part of our mission is being a college preparatory school. The fact that we have over seventy-five percent of our students going to a four. Uh, two and four-year college with the, you know, fifty-four of ninety-one students going to a four-year college. I mean, really is. Um, and the schools they're getting into, it kind of goes through all that. So it takes some time to go through that. Um, I gotta find a better way of sharing that with the community as well, because it is so significant. And George did leave out that we got US News and World Report best school in Massachusetts. Oh, it was in your email, which I know, we don't know how we get it, but when we get it, we have to. Great. Everybody, I'm sorry. Yes, I did. Yes. So I just wanted to comment those two things because those are.
We got a plaque too.
We got a plaque. Oh yeah, it's even more important.
Put that in the slideshow for us to show the towns.
Absolutely.
We get to the end of the year. And. I don't see him.
I'm sorry, I, I've been.
We're getting ready for takeoff.
I know.
I know. I've been trying to get to my room and uh, sorry to get on late here. So I, I just got to my room here. So if I missed anything, sorry.
He's just talking, but somebody else. Alright. Uh, is there anybody here for public comment?
We do have a new reporter.
I was just gonna ask, are you the new reporter from, do you mind introducing yourself? Welcome.
One thing I didn't see on the agenda here was a student advisor.
I know, I was thinking that too.
This year?
Yes.
When they pick one or.
They have, so they have somebody. So I just went to student council last week and they have somebody very happy to be.
Try to make sure to shift them on the agenda up a little bit more, just so they can get.
Yeah.
Back to. Study. Yeah. All the stuff that they, they needed to do. I think you are next with summer repairs. If I'm right, that there's no uh, other unfinished business.
Nope. Um, you all have this in your packets, but those at home, the um. This is just a list of summer repairs. This year was not as exciting as previous years where we had so many um. Big projects going on with fancy pictures. This year I just did a list. Um, Frontier did have probably the most expensive repair, that fire alarm replacement. Um, you know, we are not yet completely full. There's still some, a punch list of items, but. Um, we are up and running with the new system. It doesn't just ring anymore. It yells at you politely. Please evacuate the building, itoxia, there's lights flashing and stuff. So, um, we do have better fire safety, but um. And it ended up coming in at. They ended up coming in at.
Four ninety-five, six hundred sixty thousand dollars. We have uh. Four thousand-ish remaining, forty-five hundred remaining. We did have some change orders.
We did have some changeovers, forty-five hundred remaining, and there's still some issues in the gym with false alarms. Uh, because they use a system that shoots lasers to pick up particulars in the air. And the basketball hoop keeps going through it as they raise her and lower it for volleyball. So, um, yeah, you gotta get into it, but so they're working out those details. And if you walk around, you can still see boxes need to be covered up. There's some aesthetic stuff they still have to do. Um, but then the other side of the thing, you saw the LED scene, LED sign on the way in as well as the lag, the flagpole being lit. We did get seven new mini splits in the D wing as we continue to AC this building, which is wonderful. Um, the weight room and plow's room got replacement mirrors. We replaced all the AD pull cords and a few broken alarms in the bathrooms. Um, so if there's a fall in the bathroom that you can call for help. The auditorium lighting was completed. And gymnasium basketball court was refinished. As well as, you know, what's missing on here is the auditorium. If you haven't seen it, the stage was refinished. It looks beautiful. Um, they changed the, the wood color to a black, so it looks really professional. And um, the van. It has a recall on it. We have a loaner from them at this point. Um, they were backup cameras out or something like that. And so by the end of the month, they're telling us we'll finally get our van. And then we gotta get it over to get a decal on the side. So everybody knows whose it is. Um, you don't get in the wrong van after an event. So. Um, but good things are happening there. And you have the full list there. So you can kind of see all the different things that are happening in the other buildings. Any questions on any of those capital projects? Overall for us is a kind of, it's a quiet year compared to what we've done in the last few years here, but. It's good. The fire panel was a huge project in.
If two was here at all this summer, they were everywhere.
Alright.
And I think you made Olivia have jazz hands for auditorium updates. Are you ready for health insurance?
Oh yeah.
Oh, you're gonna do it.
Yeah. So this slideshow is the slideshow we used for um, explaining this to the association. Um, I also have a meeting with both Frontier and Union Thirty-Eight on Thursday. To explain to our employees what's going on with this as well. As Shelley mentioned earlier. The towns are in charge of the elementary schools insurance. You folks are in charge of Frontier's insurance. So we're going to take you through this. Um, you're going to know more about insurance than you wanted to, what time you leave here. Um, and hopefully we can, um. This is going to be a conversation that's going to be awful along. So it's tonight's really about getting the information about what the problem is. And what we're doing for next steps. And then um, we'll be moving forward from there. So. Um, feel free to ask questions and even at the end, if you yourself need like a. Like a personal tutorial, you're welcome to make a meeting with us to come in and just kind of go through it because. I've seen this over and over again, so I'm starting to become a pro at it. But in the beginning, I was very confused about the different moving parts and that kind of thing and how things happen. Alright, so. That's what we're talking about. Education, information, transparency and explaining the mid-year increase. So, um, I probably should explain the mid-year increase. Those who haven't, you know, been reading the paper or the emails I've been sending out. Um, we did increase our um, our contribution to the trust by eighteen percent for this fiscal year. Come end of June, they realized that there was financial issues and that they needed to do a mid-year. Um, increase of another twenty percent starting October one. So now we're up thirty-eight percent in insurance costs for both the district and the employees. Now remember that the district pays eighty percent, employees pay twenty percent. So the um. You know, it is a basically thirty-eight percent increase to employees' contribution as well. So that's, that's the kind of the crux of it and we're going to get into the um, nitty gritty of it. So Shelley's going to talk a little bit about what is the insurance trust.
So I'm going to talk about this as if you know nothing. So if you know all of this already, great. If, if you don't, then. Um, hopefully you'll come out more educated and please stop me if you have questions and I do talk fast. So. Uh, just let me know where you need me to slow down or clarify. So Frontier Regional is part of Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust. Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust is a joint purchasing entity. That was established under Mass General Law, Chapter twelve, thirty-two B. Um, it's only for municipalities, regional school districts, and then there's another small group of community organizations like. Um, Furcog is part of this Franklin Regional Council of Governments. Um, some independent uh, town water districts are part of it, even though they're separate from the municipality. But you have to be a state public entity in order to be part of the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust. So they are, are our insurance company and they are self-insured, which means that. Claims are paid by the trust on behalf of member units. If the trust were fully insured. Blue Cross Blue Shield would pay every claim that came through the door and there wouldn't be any upcharge to the trust. Because the trust is self-insured. We pay a base claim, and I say we because I'm on the executive committee and I keep talking about it like it's my own body that I. So, uh, the trust pays a base claim to Blue Cross Blue Shield. So say on average premiums, our claims have been five million dollars a month. If the claims come in high, because the trust is self-insured, say they come in at six thousand dollars a month. The trust has to pay that difference of the additional one million dollar claim premium. I think that's important to point out because as you see how the trust has lost money and why they're having a mid-year rate increase. You'll know where those funds have gone. Um, and understanding the difference between self-insured and fully insured is important part of this. So there's seven, three, seventy-three member units, part of the trust, Hampshire Franklin, Hamden and Worcester County units. They're mostly municipalities. Um, other regional school districts in the area that are in it are Pioneer, um, Hampshire, us. Don't think Delmonne here is in there.
Gateway.
Um, Gateway. And then our surrounding towns. So Deerfield, uh, Whately and Conway are also part of the trust. Sunderland has their insurance through Maya, which is a separate municipal program. Um, they used to be part of the trust. They've now moved over to Maya. So seventy-three member units, over twelve thousand active uh, employees, retirees and eligible dependents are covered under the trust's insurance plan. One of the big questions that has come up with um, legislatures and various constituents is who oversees the trust, who's responsible for decision-making? So it starts with an executive director. The trust is essentially a nonprofit organization in the way that you would think about. Structure of a nonprofit. So there's an executive director, an executive committee, and then an insurance advisory committee. The insurance advisory committee is made up of one member of each of the units. So there's seventy-three members on the insurance advisory committee. Information flows from the executive director to the executive committee. Decisions are made at the executive committee level as to what to recommend to the full insurance advisory committee. So the executive director often, I would say, operates much like Darius and I do. We make recommendations on, on policies, on handbooks, on budgets. And then it ultimately comes to this committee, or in Frontier's case, we have a budget subcommittee. That then makes recommendations to you about the budget. So just to give you an example of how all of that works. Ultimately, the, the seventy-three members that are part of the insurance advisory committee make the final voting decisions on. Plans, premiums, plan changes, the insurance company that we go with, we're with Blue Cross Blue Shield right now. Um, but if that were to change, that would all go through the executive committee. I think that's also important to point out because if you have read any of the articles in the paper, you happen to have other constituents you're talking with. There's this sense of like, who's responsible? You know, how did they make these decisions? How did this happen? Um, and I want to make sure everyone understands that each unit has a voice at the table. Whether or not they read the materials, whether or not they show up to meetings and actually vote is an entirely different story, but they have an opportunity to be part of that discussion. I am on the executive committee. I've been on the executive committee for um, two years. Um, so the benefits of being part of a trust or another um, similar insurance. Unit, like there is a state unit, um, oh my gosh, GIC, but what does it stand for? It's Group Insurance Commission was escaping me. Um, so benefits of being with, with them, but particularly Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust is what I just explained in the last slide is. Members have a voice. If you're part of the GIC, if your, if your insurance is through Maya, or if you have an independent broker. You have no control over what those plans look like. If there's a high deductible plan and that's the only plan offered, that's all you get. As part of the trust, we get to have a say in what type of insurance our employees, our retirees and their dependents have. Um, plans right now are very benefit-rich. We have no deductibles. We have no copays unless like you need an ambulance ride or you need to go to the emergency room. Um, so the plan is, is really geared toward giving subscribers the most for their premium. Um, we have had a lower competitive cost history compared to the GRC or Maya. And what was the last point there? Was there anything else important?
I, I thought those can be that.
Yeah. So the other thing is that it's local staff and we get responsive service. So the employees that. Are servicing us that work at the trust, it's a small group. There's only four of them in the office and I believe one of them is part-time. Um, you pick up the phone and call them. You're not getting, you know, rerouted in different directions. You actually have people that you're talking to. Um, they're handling your issues one-on-one. You know, I had several employees this week. I went to a dentist's appointment. I found out I don't have my card. What do I do? All I have to do is shoot off a message and I get a response back immediately. So there's no delay for subscribers and getting information. Um, rate increases. So we did, Darius just explained, we had the July one rate increase. It was part of our budget discussion and part of why our budget grew as well as all of our surrounding towns. Um, rates are calculated in January for the upcoming fiscal year. So much like we build our budget in January, February, March. We just had an out of district placement change where student costs to go to other schools are two hundred thousand dollars plus. The executive committee and the full committee are looking at changes in January for a change that happens actually in July. So we set those rates based on claim history. Uh, the executive director talks with Blue Cross Blue Shield. They talk with the pharmaceutical provider, which right now happens to be CVS Caremark. And they gather claim data and build the premiums and the agreements with those vendors based on prior claim information. We also look at cash reserves and cash flow. And then there's also discussion of trends in medical claims, which we're going to talk about a little bit more. Those trends, particularly in the pharmaceutical realm and how they jacked up rates. But it's hard for us to budget sometimes months and months in advance. We're talking six months of a fiscal year that you're missing data from. And claims are always billed behind, right? So if I go to the doctors right now, my insurance company is not getting that bill immediately. It hopefully forty-five, sixty, ninety days the doctors billed. So there's always this delay. Sometimes it can even be longer. So. Again, that question keeps coming up of how did this happen? Well, we're looking at. Setting rates based on the information that we have in that moment. We don't have a crystal ball of claims that are going to come up in the future. Um, history of rate increases, uh, you can see here there are multiple years of zero rate increase, one year of even a deduction. The driver behind this, if you look at those fiscal years, is COVID-driven. Uh, you were only having procedures done in hospitals or doctors that were necessary. A lot of people were not having elective procedures. So the trust was able to hold on to reserves because claims were not over that benchmark that we pay Blue Cross Blue Shield. So they were able to save up some funds and um, mitigate claim increases. Uh, the last couple of years, there were less than double-digit, twenty-three and twenty-four were six and eight percent respectively. The last couple of years, there were less than double-digit, twenty-three and twenty-four were six and eight percent respectively. As the executive director and advisors to him in the insurance industry were seeing that pharmaceutical claims were rising, medical claims were becoming more erratic, we went ahead and voted the eighteen and the twenty percent for the PPO increase for July one. That was supposed to help cover up some of the loss that we're going to talk about a little bit further that happened in that timeframe from January to June that we didn't have predictability on. So the mid-year rate increase was recommended because the insurance landscape has changed particularly dramatically since January of twenty twenty-five. Claims have been consistently higher, whereas in the past, you're going to see in some of the graphs, it had been flowed. It peaked and then went down. And what I want to point out is that when the claims drop below that benchmark we pay Blue Cross Blue Shield, the trust, go ahead. Perfect. So if you see the straight line across at the five point five million dollars, that's the baseline that the trust was paying Blue Cross Blue Shield. When claims spike up, so you can see last July, they were six and a half million, moving to January, just shy of that. May and June that just passed, they jumped up to eight and a half million. The trust has to pay the difference in the five point five to whatever that claim spike is. So every month, the trust is taking money out of savings to help pay for that. We don't charge anymore to membership. When it dips below that five point five million dollar line, the trust does not get any money back from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Blue Cross Blue Shield is an insurance company or in it to make money. So you would think that there would be some savings just by looking at the graph. We don't recoup in those months that it was only, you know, four point eight million or four point six million. We don't get back those hundreds of thousands of dollars that were not spent in claims. I forget what was on the last slide. Can you go back one more?
Go back one.
Yeah. Okay, so because of that loss of revenue in medical and then we're going to talk about pharmaceutical when, when Darius goes up, the trust lost ten million dollars in six months between January and June of twenty twenty-five. That period where we did not have predictability to know what claims were going to look like. When you see that graph that shows the revenue loss or the income loss, you'll see that that continues to go down. And at the end of June or July, we had about four point four million dollars left in the bank. It's not enough money. When you have claims that are three million dollars over your baseline in one month, four million dollars is not going to last very long, right? That math is easy. So the executive director called a meeting with the executive committee. Executive committee voted for a mid-year rate increase and it was taken to the full insurance advisory committee. So can we go to the pharmaceutical slide real quick? Okay, so the pharmaceutical slide was the first factor. We should probably reverse these in the next presentation. So another change that happened mid-cycle was I think it was in June or July, the trust voted to eliminate Wegovy, which is a injectable weight loss drug. And that is the driver of the pharmaceutical claim increase. So you can see back to July twenty twenty-four, we were just shy of two million in pharmaceutical claims. June of twenty twenty-five at three million. And we have been assured by CVS Caremark and Blue Cross Blue Shield that that primary driving factor was the weight loss drug. If people have that, the similar brand is Ozempic. If people are using that for diabetic needs, they can still get that drug. That has not been eliminated. It's just if you're prescribed the drug for weight loss, it has been eliminated from the plan. Some other insurance companies had started eliminating that prior to the trust. The trust has taken some criticism for not acting on it sooner. However, we did feel like with the rate increase that we had set of eighteen to twenty percent and this change, we would be able to recoup some funds.
I think also at that point, to give a break there, at that point, we had already seen the bump. Ozempic, I'll use Ozempic because it's the easiest thing, easiest thing to come to mind. Had already hit the market and we already had that window where people are onboarding onto using Ozempic. Between March and June, there were over fifty subscribers going new onto a weight loss drug plan. And the cost of the weight loss drug, if a family plan is five hundred dollars a month for a, per family, for the insurance, it was fifteen hundred. If you were put on a weight loss drug plan. That was the cost.
Three times the premium that was being paid to Blue Cross is what this one individual drug was costing.
So, and also where have you had in pharmaceutical history outside of a plague where you've had a new drug come to a market where a disease isn't already being treated? If, if that makes sense, in the sense of like, if you had a new cancer drug, your cancer patients aren't increasing exponentially at the, you know, at the same time, you follow that kind of logic. Like you entered a drug into a market where there was no drug it was replacing. If that, if that makes sense. So that's another kind of thing to talk about when you see this huge range where other drugs enter the market, a new diabetes medicine comes out. Diabetes medicines are already being prescribed. It's going to be, maybe it may cost a little bit more, but you don't have a new, a new, a new thing in the market. So that's just something to also understand why you see this huge jump in pharmaceutical as well because it's a new product curing a new, not a new problem, but a problem that didn't have a pharmaceutical solution. I just want to give, also give you a break. Give yourself a break for a second. There you go.
Shelley, can I just clarify, is it just those two or is it all medications in that drug class? Because there's more.
There are others that are still going to be covered and I can't remember the name of them off the top of my head. So it's a particular brand that was most regularly prescribed that has been eliminated.
Keep an eye out because it may just shift.
Yeah. So it would be ideal actually if CVS eliminated the coverage of it because then we have to follow suit. We chose to eliminate it, so it's just restricted to that one drug. But more and more companies are, are taking it off the market.
And I also want to say when I, when we give facts, that's not, I know you people in the room understand it, but anybody watching this or recording of it, that doesn't mean our employees. This is out of the twelve thousand people in the trust. We may have nobody on a weight loss drug in our, in our community, in our, in our, in our coverage. So I just want to put that out there. When I say those things, I don't people like, you know, the narrative changes when you put misinformation like that.
The next slide shows cash reserves. You can see a year ago, the trust had about twenty million dollars in cash reserves. Think of it as their excess and deficiency, even though it's not called that. But it would be the same situation for us if we had an emergency come up. We're dipping into our excess and deficiency to fund that. You can see that steady decline of cash reserves where in June twenty twenty-five, which is where the conversation really started about the mid-year rate increase, that we were just shy of five million dollars. So July thirtieth, the full insurance advisory committee, which had the highest attendance number for unit members as well as other constituents. Select board members were on the call, superintendents were on the call, legislators were on the call. We had to increase the capacity of the trust Zoom capabilities because we knew that it was going to be a packed house. We did explain all of these slides. They were slightly different for the full group. We've modified them for our needs here, but it did pass by majority vote. There was one unit present that voted against it. There were a couple of units absent, so obviously they didn't vote. But one of the key factors that I believe swayed the decision-making around this because nobody in the room wants a twenty percent rate increase, not for their employees, not for themselves. Like I carry our insurance. I, I don't want another twenty percent rate increase either, nor do we want it for our units. Some of our member towns that are part of the trust, larger districts, this is going to be over a million dollar increase for them. Towns that already had to have override on their fiscal year twenty-six budget, they're going to have to go back and ask for additional funding. So I think no one in the room wanted to approve this. But if we did not, we were at risk of the trust closing within the next thirty to sixty days and the trust running out of money, which meant that subscribers, our employees, our retirees, their dependents would immediately lose their insurance coverage. So that felt as scary as, you know, a twenty percent increases. That felt, at least for me, and I voted yes in support of this, the lesser of those two evils and gives us an opportunity to figure out how to fund it for the current year and then how we move forward, whether we stay with the trust or we look at other options. So when we met with the executive board of the two unions, Union Thirty-Eight and Frontier, we talked a little bit about how it affects our town and how it affects our communities. We don't have to go over these, there's links in here, which you only got the PDF, I think. So I can send you those separately, but I did rough cost estimates for what the cost would be to the employees and for our towns. It is pretty significant for each of the towns and for Frontier. The employee costs, depending what your plan is, of course, no one wants to lose more cash out of their paychecks. But sure, you can pull it up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I gotta.
Yes. I'm going to have to make that way bigger. I can send you these too as PDFs. So, and I'm even having a hard time reading that.
Trying my best here.
I do not have this part memorized off the top of my head. So this is the employee increase. Yes, I can make this. So an employee working at Conway Grammar School, the annual cost of the I do, yeah, yeah, sure.
Let's, yeah, let's have them look at what they're responsible for.
Okay. So the annual cost of the employee before the increase was two thousand thirteen dollars and sixty cents. After the increase, it's two thousand three hundred sixteen dollars. So if you have an individual plan, it's a total of three hundred and two dollars a year, spread over your twenty-two paychecks, not a significant amount in the grand scheme of things. As you go through a family plan or if you're on the PPO, it is much larger. Again, nobody wants to pay more for insurance. No one wants their paycheck decreased. So everyone that's on our insurance is seeing a hit from this. But when you look at these numbers compared to what the impact is to the actual district itself, it's, it's pretty staggering. And I'm still doing rough calculations. We can show what I had estimated before. But there's so many changes in the months leading up to school with new hires and who's coming on the plan and who's not coming on the plan. The trust also offered an opportunity for subscribers to change from the PPO to the HMO. They gave a two-week period where you could change your benefits if the PPO was too expensive. So sort of if we're going to look at these numbers, take it with a grain of salt right now. It could be escalated. If you go to the towns in Frontier and we look at the Frontier one.
The chart that you just showed with the increases, is that just a July first twenty percent one?
No, that took into, yeah, that took into consideration the twenty percent.
If you take the dollar amount and you buy it by twelve months, I mean, yes, it's a lot of money, but
But if you take that on top of, you know, what we had already had a twenty percent. So you're looking at forty percent increase in one year is significant. Okay, so annual cost of Frontier before the increase, you can see there looking at an individual was just over eight thousand. Annual cost of Frontier after the increase, just over nine thousand, a growth of twelve hundred dollars. The big change is the family plans and that's where we have most of our employees. So the plan cost now is up from twenty-three thousand to almost twenty-seven thousand to cover a family plan for an employee. When you multiply those factors by our actual enrollments, I estimated three hundred thousand dollar increase for our insurance costs. We just received our October bill, which will have all of those adjustments that may have come in with new hires, add drops, changes. This is a pretty unpredictable thing because we never know in the future what's going to happen. Someone gets married and they need to change to a family plan. Someone has a baby and they need to change to a family plan. Someone's spouse or partner loses insurance and they need to come on ours. All of those qualifying events impact what our true insurance number means. But I do think we're going to be somewhere around the three hundred thousand dollar mark. How that translates into our budget, I'm still working on because if you don't know me by now, you, Celia and Diane don't know my budget as well as the others, but I like to err on the side of caution. I like to be conservative. I like to make sure we're covered. So my hope is that we have at least half of a buffer to help cover this. But in the end, ultimately that hurts us because it means we have less free cash, less E and D, less capital projects we can tackle, less reserves for emergency funds. So while I'm not concerned about the current year's funding, this is a huge hit. Don't get me wrong by saying that. I know we'll find a way to pay for it. I'm more concerned about what the impact is long-term. How does it affect our free cash? How does it affect FY twenty-seven budget? How does it affect our employees? And then if we go back to the slide, what does it mean for us moving forward? Because I would bet that we'll see another double-digit increase if we stay with the trust moving forward. And I don't think that that's just particular to the trust either. If you look at insurance trends, if you're in the healthcare industry, it's just the way that, that trends have changed and insurance is costing more and more across the board. The GIC, which is the State Group Insurance Commission, they get a bailout from the state because they are a state program. So whereas the trust has been able to use their reserves to cover claims, the state has to right-side whatever overage GIC has. So I forget what the exact number is, so I don't want to throw it out there. But I believe it was well over a hundred thousand dollars that the state had to fund from their state budget to help right-side the GIC. And when the GIC claims are lower, that money goes back to state reserves, whereas the trust doesn't see any money back from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So I know it's a ton of information and if you've not, if you know nothing about this, it's really a lot of information to take in, but it's all important.
This next slide is, there's so, we're at a point now, it's like, so what happens next? And I just wanted to show you right in front of you, what I put up on the screen there is a Maya comparison, which Sunderland has, the Sunderland's plan. And Maya does plans by community, so they look at your, your history and then they build a plan. But they're relatively very similar. So for Western Massachusetts. And so if you look at the Maya HMO plan versus the HC GIT, which is our Hampshire, it's our Hampshire group, you can see the difference that Maya is actually, this is after the twenty percent increase. But if you go down to the deductible and you throw the deductible into the plan, it's not, they're pretty even. And so what I want people to do is there's a, the initial reaction is, oh my God, the trust, you know, we have a problem with the trust, we need to get out. And there's also this talk, and we're talking with a lot of people, part of the trust. Every community is going with this, right? Like, should we need to go? We should go join the GIC. You know, they're more stable, this kind of thing. We've been with the trust a long time and this is the first time we've had this kind of problem. But the hard part for us, is this the beginning to an end? Or are we going to be able to pull out of that? And that's kind of where we're going to, Shelley and I both have meetings in the next week. We have a presentation from Maya and a presentation from GIC to hear about their onboarding and stuff. And those deadlines are early December, to get onto their plans for the next fiscal year. At the same time, remember, we went into the trust, the problem we have with the trust, remember, the reason you get into a trust is that to share liability over a greater number of people, right? This, the money that we spent was for our people of the trust, our own community and that kind of thing. It wasn't like there was a mismanagement and someone walked away with a couple million or, you know, that kind of thing. It was, you know, the amount of care needed for our people went up and we didn't increase our rates at the same rate. So it's also, you know, you know, we're providing this, a, a good benefit package. I also want people to remind you, if we leave, I'm telling you where I land right now, is I, I want to watch where this goes because I don't think people should abandon the trust yet. I think we have to be very cautious to make sure that we're not without a parachute at the end or an offloading plan. And I've had a conversation with Joe Shea, the director, about the trust probably needs to be a bit more proactive about what it can do if things don't go well or if a lot of people end up leaving because there is this kind of reaction that we must do something. This was done to us. I mean, our faculty and staff feel that way. They feel this was done to them. They just got a great, maybe they won't use the word great, but a, I think a very fair increase in their contract. It just got eaten up. The majority of it just got taken. The majority of it just got taken away by insurance. That feels very, that hurts. And, but at the same time, I think we have to be very calm, cool and collective as we go through this process, gather all the data, look at the other plans, know what we give up if we go on to the plans. And if that's how we're moving forward, and at the same time, talking to everybody else. Shelley and I also had a meeting with the three town administrators about two weeks ago to find out what the towns are doing. They're kind of approaching it the way we are right now. They're in the information gathering stage, trying to find out, you know, what the cost of their towns are, looking at other plans, trying to figure out how they're going to pay this year's bill. Frontier's in a good position because, as you know, we do have E and D remaining that we can pay from. And we also have school choice where we can pay from, okay? Our school choice numbers are up from last year, so there's going to be some reserves there as well. Other districts around us have not been so fortunate. And if you talk to other people, I know Pioneer had to do cuts in order to make this, to make this thing. I know, I don't know how Mohawk handled it, but every town's kind of dealing with it. We were kind of in a fortunate position where we had those reserves. And to re, to kind of repeat what Shelley was saying earlier, we were hoping to use those returns to take care of the parking lot and the roof without going to the towns on a warrant. Because the towns are all now going to be hurting at the same time. So this is where that ripple effect's going to go because the towns are going to have to pick up the insurance for all their employees, which the majority are teachers, right? And so, it's a, that's the complicated thing we're at. So anyway, they kind of say what I was saying, so yeah, questions?
I wonder how many people, employees, they have spouses that work, that take them and maybe will switch to their spouse's insurance, maybe. I remember at one time, years ago, we used to, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, that we gave money to employees so you would be on somebody else's plan. You know, we don't want to get that money out if they're already with us. But if they're going to take on, you know, their spouse's insurance, maybe it's time to, you know, if we can get them to go with their insurance, give them, give them a little bit of money to leave, which.
No, please.
So there's a couple of things with that. One, Frontier's insurance is probably one of the best around. We cover 80% of the plan, including a family plan. So I would be hard-pressed to think that there are spouses that have better options. But if we did want to offer that, it's certainly something that the committee could consider. It is part of the teacher contract already. So there is a $1,000 payout if you do not take our insurance plan.
We did some research on that, and the majority of people who were taking the payout didn't do that as part of their decision-making factor. And there was only like three, that their, their spouse had, their spouse partner had a better plan somewhere else. And so the numbers were really low. So we were talking about increasing that, and we realized that that's not going to be, wasn't incentive enough to leave the, the savings they are getting on the quality plans.
Other insurance companies, like my wife has Health New England, because she works at Baystate, they must be, everybody must be going up.
So that's, that's a good thing to remind. So when we talk about double-digit increase next year, so what is it going to be? Is it going to be between 10 and 15%, 15 and 20%? I mean, that's going to obviously have a major factor. But I think we're going to see double digits, 10 to 15% out of everyone. So if you move, and I use the Maya kind of example because we have that information. We're going to get the information from the GIC. But if you move to Maya right now, Maya's going to increase by 10 to 12, 10 to 15% next year. They, they have to, we got, all insurance is going up. So you kind of have to put that guessing calculation in there as well.
So, but you're, you're right. Creative things we could look at, you know, you could look at offering a higher incentive to people to go to another plan. You could eliminate the PPO because the PPO is more expensive and only have the HMO. But the caveat with that is if we're changing benefits, it could be subject to impact bargaining with the union. So that would be a process that we would have to go through. Neither of us have done that, and.
And I've talked with our association, they, they don't know how to manage that either. So that's going to be a whole nother thing we're going to have to get educated on. It's like, what can be bargained, how is it bargained, where does the law step in, depending on how you move and when you move and all those kind of things.
The trust is also looking at adding plans, so adding a higher deductible plan, adding co-pays. But again, it's one of those things that the, the membership has to vote on. They have tried in years past to make changes and the membership voted it down, for whatever reason.
So they tried to do deductibles in certain things about four years ago, and the membership said that they weren't interested in deductibles. Now deductibles alone doesn't make up, and it's a gentleman from, John from. John Parrish from.
Tom Garrish, he's a consultant.
A consultant from, explained that, from Blue Cross Blue Shield, explained that deductibles change behaviors. It saves you money. So if you have a really bad headache and you think the answer is to go to the. If, I don't know, the one that solves this problem. The, if, if you went to the emergency room for that headache, you just cost the trust a lot more money than another angle. And if had there been a deductible, you may have chosen a different thing. However, the flip side of it is that you're watching every dollar and you have chest pain. You decide not to go to the emergency room and you end up having a heart attack because you didn't want to pay the deductible. So those are kind of the, as we look at deductibles and plans and that kind of stuff, the reason they put them in there is not just the money it gives the agent, but it creates better, better decisions about how to funnel the healthcare system. So they're going to have to, you know, I look at Shelley, she's on, she's cursed. She's cursed that she's stuck with that responsibility, but we're blessed that we have a lot more knowledge about. Out of the game, we knew a lot more than the other districts. So I attend superintendent meetings and I was like, I was a wealth of knowledge because of Shelley being able to kind of telling that to me, so.
I want to explain one more thing, and you've talked about this everywhere, but we haven't touched on it yet, is another reason that Darius and I want to hang in there with the trust is there is what's called a claim runoff period if you leave the insurance group. So say we separated for July 1st. Any unpaid claims, let's just say it's May and June, that the trust has not paid when we separate our agreement with them, become the district's responsibility. So if someone has an emergency procedure on June 15th and we leave June 30th as our last day and that claim was not billed to Blue Cross and Blue Shield and was not paid by Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust, and it's $100,000, Frontier Regional is paying that bill.
It would be, we would have to set aside hundreds of thousands of dollars because of the size of Frontier. It's not just our employees, but their spouses and the retired employees, right? And so all those are kind of included in this. So we don't, like, right now, we go like, everybody looks fine to me. Don't go to the emergency for two months, you know, don't go to your procedures for two months or something like that. It doesn't work that way. There's so many other layers where you don't know if someone, you know, God forbid, you know, is going through a cancer treatment. The cost of that is astronomical. And, and, you know, and we don't know, you know, going back 45 days is usually, you know, you know, Missy would know even more than I, it, it would be, is reasonable. There's, there's going to be, you have to actually have that money to change over as well. So that should be another factor when we discuss this. And we'll, we're going to come back around and talk all, all this again. This was just kind of out of the gate. Information, Jim, yeah. Right now, yeah, so, and, and there are bigger units. And so they're, to keep an eye on the bigger units as well, that have a more. And when we talked with Joe about that, he said, you know, quite a few could leave. And he thinks they also leave with their, depends on if everybody who's leaving has had low submittals, you know, that could be a backfire. But he said, you know, it could take some reduction and still be okay. Yeah, if, well, that's, that the offboarding, what Shelley just explained, does have a thing on that. There is that concern. And so when we reached out to, we didn't reach out, but the, the trust, which is we, reached out to the legislators, they, you know, obviously frustrated with the problem, you know, started talking about going on to GIC. You know, I, you know, would wish that they would instead support us by saying, let's see how this goes. And if it doesn't work out, we will help create an onboarding period with the GIC for the 12,000 members here. Because if you go to the, let's say we go to GIC, it doesn't carry Blue Cross Blue Shield. So the amount of people whose doctors are through Blue Cross Blue Shield and that, the amount of unrest that you would be causing are, besides the, now we hit you with a cost increase, then we're going to say you're going to have to change doctors and change what your, you know, if someone's in the middle of care and that kind of, so those are all kind of ripple effects there as well. But anyways, I was going to, with the, they were, I, I would like to see them supported in that way. Right now, I'm concerned that insurance companies are going to start picking people off. You know what I mean? And some of them are small, somebody, it says 73, but there are some with six members. You know, their increase is $6,000, you know what I mean? Or, you know, that kind of thing. So it's, you know, if them jumping off and, or changing to whatever the town has, if they're the water district changing over to what the town is, is not a big deal. There are some bigger communities out there that are part of this, and it is going to be, you know, carefully watching them as well, what they're doing.
But the problem isn't necessarily with the number of units or the number of subscribers. It's really about the claims. And if a large unit leaves with low claims, but a small unit stays with high claims, it's not going to have a negative impact. I don't know that information.
And they have trouble.
And a lot of it is, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but a lot of this, the other challenging part is it's, people are protected under HIPAA. So you can only discuss so many things in any of the meetings, even in executive committee. He's like, I can't share that, but this is like the gist of what happened. But what I think, to finish up this topic, I'm sorry, I totally interrupted you. I think what will become the problem with the trust, if too many units leave, a big insurance company like Blue Cross Blue Shield isn't going to want to carry us anymore because it's not enough money for them. So then it changes the plan that we can offer. So does Health New England pick us up, which is only the New England states, which does an offer as good benefits? You know, plans may be different, premiums will be different. So there will be some impact from units leaving. I don't know that it means the trust folds because enough units leave. Sorry.
You did better than me.
It was a point we really haven't talked about yet, but.
Yeah, and I would also say, as we plan further, this group may have to have some additional meetings as we get closer to those deadlines. Right now, we don't have a December, well, we'd have a big meeting in November. So it's going to be, as we gather information, sharing it. And then I'm just saying, letting people know that your workload will be a little bit heavier between mid-October and the end of November because we're going to have discussions if we're going to leave, present you with the information. Hopefully, the information will be such where it won't be a difficult decision in the sense of staying or even, even leaving, if that's the case, that. I just get worried about that, like, if you have to make the call based on the same way.
So GIC has that hard deadline. It's in their regulations by the state of December 1st. So they did schedule a meeting with any, they invited any member of the trust to go to an informational meeting. So I know I'm going to ask the question if they will consider extending that period for trust members because it's not enough time for people to make a decision.
And if there's a fear, you have the double fear factor, right? So you get the fear factor of what about if the rates from the trust going up? Or, you know, the fear factor, if we don't leave and something happens, you know, the people who are in charge, making these decisions, you know, it's, you know, your select board members and those kind of, in some cases, have no real background in, in insurance or in this kind of stuff, making these decisions and also pressured by angry town meeting, right? So they're going to have these fall town meetings where people are like, listen, we've had snow and ice storms that costed $100,000. You know what I mean? But there's no one to blame on this. This, someone is to blame and there must be change and that kind of stuff. So I also have concerns that people are going to be pressured to make change because of change and not look at the, all the facts about that. And I think, hopefully, as the, you know, my group of superintendents is getting together and we're going to have a meeting with Joe Shea next week, just so more and more people who are a part of decision-making are getting, understanding the full picture and that kind of thing. Because there is a information gap. Because as Joe will say, like, all these members are supposed to be reading everything I send out. Same thing the school does, right? We send out all this information, how many, right, people read the packet, cover to cover, right?
62 pages.
Right, 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 exactly. And so i- it is that, like, people have to get caught up to speed. As Shelley said, some members weren't going to meetings, now they're certainly attending. And so getting all those people up to speed so they see this.
So what, what is the trust saying about their liability? So they, they picked 20%? Maybe they could pick 18, they could pick 20. The 20 was chosen for a reason. They take them where and then what and for how long?
Yeah, so the.
What's the bigger picture with it? Is your account house?
Yeah, it's a really good question. I don't think there's a concrete answer to it at this point. The 20% based on the financial projections that were put together by the executive director and reviewed by the executive committee gets us through this year so that the trust can remain open. Looking at claim data more closely, we've increased the number of meetings that the executive committee is having, increased the number of meetings that the full insurance advisory committee is having so that everyone is more informed. We're also considering changing, normally we set rates in January, which in part is so that city or towns and regional school districts can do their budgets, right? But we're talking about, can we delay that a month or six weeks so that the trust has more information? So I think that Joe Shea, the executive director, would tell you that, yes, the trust is going to be here. I'm not yet that confident.
And also, it's a bit of a moving target because there's two things happening, it's more than two things happening at once. But there, there's a rate increase, but also a change in coverage. And you have to both increase the amount of revenue coming in and also see the impact of the potential for claims going down.
If claims level out, which we have no predictability on, but if they level out back to the baseline, the trust will survive. If we continue to have this.
And to be positive, and to be positive, July numbers came out and they started, they came down.
They did.
They did not continue to rise, they, they're starting to trend down. Their August numbers are coming out, I think he's releasing them next, this week, at the end of this week. So if we have two months in a row, you know, we'll start, this is when we talk about data, we'll start to have an idea, like, are we heading in the right direction?
And this is after Wegovy has been. Or whichever one, whichever.
No, it was Wegovy.
Oh, it was.
One of them was taken off.
Yeah.
And so then these people have two months of data that reflect for them.
And you mentioned talking to the local legislative, state legislators, what's their, it's seemingly they're invested in helping.
So the state has no interest in bailing out the trust, right? So, because that would set a precedent of all the other kind of insurance companies and groups out there, even though the GIC gets bailed out, but that's, that's theirs to own, I guess that is. So they have a meeting, or do they have a meeting? They have a meeting Friday to discuss that with Joe. There, there's some criticisms coming from them that we've heard that, you know, we, the, the trust should have acted sooner on some of these changes. Years of no increase, you know? Again, those things are voted on, you know, it's, it's just like small things. Like last year, the increase was 18%. Joe proposed 20. They vote, they voted it down to 18. So, you know what I mean? Like, so sometimes like the end result is our own doing as a group, right? But that's kind of what the message I'm getting from them. They set up the GIC to contact all of us, which I think has the adverse effect of like, now there's a deadline on us, all of us to make a decision. So that's kind of how I'm reading it, I don't know how you're reading it.
I think that they're surprised as to how the problem came about and I think they want to be supportive. I'm just not sure that there is a solution for them to do that.
Right. I think they're.
There's no, there's no reserve money that they're going to give any of the member cities or towns or regional school districts or the trust for a bailout.
Right. And so we went, Pedro Martinez, our new commissioner, and Patrick Tuttwaller, Tuttwaller, the secretary of education, I, we had a meeting with them on Friday. Our group stated, like, you need to understand this insurance problem because if you start doing other mid-year cuts, we're doomed. And they talked about trying to put more money back into, you know, they were talking about backfilling some of the rural aid money with some of the, the fair share of them and stuff. I'll tell you how I read the room, that's not happening, but they're not the, they're not, they're not the end-all-be-all behind that. But they weren't leading the flag on that, that's for sure. They weren't saying, that's great, we're hoping that goes through. They're like, oh, thank you, we'll, you know, be considering. They're like, oh, thank you, we'll, you know, be considering that. So I was kind of depressed by it. But anyway, we, you know, so we're communicating with them as well so that their towns don't get hit with more, you know, reductions in, you know, if they do, chapter, title, not title nine. Nine?
Nine C.
Nine C cuts, if there's any of those kind of things that happen this year. There's already worries coming out of our, out of Mars. They have Julie Kelly, who works out of Mars. Is kind of a guru with finance. She has concerns that the Hili administration is already considering cuts. I think she's ultra-conservative, but, you know, those are all things to worry about if there's more things going on. I don't want me to add more and more worries with it. That's, those are the conversations out there.
So do we have a timeline for kind of what to expect? When in terms of next steps for this?
So the trust has another meeting this week. I know the executive director is meeting with the legislatures again on Friday. We have a meeting with GIC next week, and the Maya meeting is next week also, right? So, you know, certainly by the next school committee meeting, we may have some more information. I don't know if we'll be ready for decision-making.
I think, yeah, no, I think we'll report back at the next school committee meeting. This is what we learned. Also get to you ahead of time so you can read through it and that kind of stuff. And just kind of, we'll do a status of where things stand, and then we'll have more data about how the trust is doing as well. That's why I'm saying, like, if we're, and then which way we would lean, I think we probably, I'm really projecting ahead. We'll come up with a plan, but we gotta look at what the GIC plan is, what the Maya plan is. Do we like one more? What does the onboarding of that look like? If it's GIC, we know what that deadline is. Maya is a little bit different because they operate differently. There may be more flexibility there. So we'll get all that information to you next step along the way. And then if you pick up stuff, feel free to shoot us emails. You know, if you're hearing from other people and, you know, a lot of communities are having conversations about this. So there is a, it's an information gap, and then there's different information coming from different sources. So I think one of the main things we gotta make sure to do is everybody has the same amount of information and the correct information, so.
I have, I have two questions. I had it, and then I lost the GIC acronym, which is remind me.
Group Insurance Commission.
And then, I'm really sorry, I'm generally pretty, like, early-bid and early-to-rise person, and I just am trying to budget my alertness. How long do these meetings usually run?
Not this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I just, like, there's still a lot of agenda left, so I just, just trying to check in about managing my expectations.
Yeah, and this is, this particular topic is the heaviest thing outside of budget that hopefully hits this committee this year in the sense of this is unprecedented in the sense of kind of out of the blue kind of a budget problem that we've had before.
Two, two quick comments. First of all, thank you for this date-long, complicated presentation. I learned a lot. And I want to note that I was able to learn a lot. I made sure the slide deck was sent out with advance. I was able to prepare and understood the thing through what I was proposing to, so I covered a lot of details, which I would have been able to do without that preparation. So thank you. That's really good practice. And also, Shelley, thank you for voting yes. I think that that comes to me hard to vote for in the second place. But the idea of moving any of our inventory that helps the strength for N nine times is just not believable.
We move on to the strategic plan.
Let's move on. It's just running the district.
This is an unusually long. There's a lot of.
The strategic plan, the good news, or hopefully it'll be good news for all of you, is that I'm not gonna go through slide by slide of the strategic plan. So I just kind of give you an update. The, and Sarah's here as well. Sarah and Laura were, you know, architects behind this plan, putting all the information together. And I just, again, we have not done a process like this since I've been in the district. And this is eighteen years for me, where we really went out, got a lot of information, and applied that information into our plan. So I want to thank everybody for that process. I really do think it's authentic. And the way we're approaching this strategic plan is this is the first read. We will vote it in October. And this isn't a plan, I don't think any of these plans should be set in stone and we're stuck with it for five years. If we have to make adjustments, we have to change different accountabilities or wording as the years go on, as we give updates to strategic plan, how we're doing on that. Also, school improvement plans come off of this, so a lot of Xs and Os can get done through a school improvement plan coming off a strategic plan. So I just want people to know, like, while it's a heavy document because it does set the course, I don't want people to be like, you know, this is, you know, every dot, every T or I isn't dotted or crossed or that kind of thing. From when you saw it last, the biggest, and I kind of gave this in my cheat sheet notes for the meeting, but is that we added success criteria that was not on the plan before. So that kind of gives you what the outcomes, the measurable outcomes can be. And so that, it's a big add-on from what the last plan had, so that's the most significant change. There is some content throughout as we took in different ideas and editorial, some wording changes and that kind of thing. Again, I think the founding principles are really, you know, the cornerstone of what this is. You can find that in my letter in the beginning, which is academic excellence, social emotional development, and community engagement and collaboration. So those being, those foundation principles kind of being the core here. Again, I'm not gonna go through all the objectives and strategies. The portrait of the graduate, again, I got feedback that it's tough to read. I'll get those kind of edits changed. Any other kind of things that come forward, again, you know, the company that throws this together is doing it pro bono to make it pretty, and, you know, anything that's trouble reading or that kind of thing, you know, we can make those kind of things, those changes in the end. At the very end of the document is accountability. Is there kind of our checklist? That's not really part of the plan. I added that because we were, we started using it in-house, and I know you can't read it really. I can share, I'll share with you the actual document that is pulled from. But the plan feels so overwhelming that I threw that on the end because people were like, how are you tracking all this? There's so much going on in this plan. And this is kind of a nice visual that, I think Laura, Sharon, did you put that, did you both you put that together? So Sarah and Laura put that together. And that'll get removed from the public-facing posting of it, but it will be something that we bring back as report to the school committee about where we're at, if that makes sense. So. Questions? Again, shoot me emails if you find typos, those, that kind of stuff. There's a lot going on there, and we can get them changed for the next meeting. Or if you have larger concerns you want to do outside of meeting, and let them do that. All right, that wasn't too bad.
Thank you. Very positive. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelly, for my follow-up, too, because we went around, we did a lot of meetings together.
Sarah, is this some of the stuff that came out of those family meetings?
Yes, yes.
Maybe we can give a shout out to those people who, whatever happened to that? Like, I think that sometimes connecting those dots for people just helps with, I know there's feedback, but.
Yeah, it's really, it's a big, awesome.
Awesome. Donation?
Yep, sure.
So say you need to take a vote on something.
The Peggy Thompson donation. If I can say that.
I'm not.
Do you have the details on that?
Yeah, so Peggy was a medicine supervisor for Frontier. She passed in July, so her husband and I were pretty worried. And said she was an artist. She actually wanted to leave money to Frontier to help support her. So she made, he made a donation for me, five thousand dollars specifically for, she had, she, she, they married, he said that she, she was from Frontier, he was from Frontier. They both left the area, they never came back, and so they settled, they were in Spanish for, she asked away, and she had that a lot. She wrote pictures online, she was both with them. But she wanted to donate money, because she loved the arts and she loved Frontier, so.
I just wanted to roll a caveat on that. So I was in the office, and we were just talking to this gentleman. And they had one conversation, and the dollar amount started out with a lot less, and he was really intrigued by what was happening here in the conversation. And the check ended up being much lighter, which just is, she's over here.
And is this can, and portion of it is going directly to make sure the kiln is.
It's a market for arts and for hopefully, hopefully to regard it.
Which goes directly to her passion in pottery. That's why I want to make that connection there, too, because. So we need to vote to accept?
Yeah, she's gonna. All in favor of accepting the donation? Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you. Peggy Thompson's family.
I think, you know, have you, are you on that?
So it said, okay, good.
Excellent, thank you. Make sure we do that as well. The next one is, oop, sorry.
You are absolutely correct. I'm so sorry. Thank you. On that vote, I have a, we're gonna go back and do a roll call, because Damian, I'm so sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch you on that. All right. Call for a yes for Damian, and just for good measure, you want to go around and do a roll call? Yes. That would be fantastic. Yes.
Olivia, yes, Bob.
Yeah.
Phil. Mary. Leslie. Daphne, yes, Diane.
Yes.
Zilia.
Yes.
Damian.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good catch. Appreciate it.
All right, the next thing on the, well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. The next thing on the agenda is the handbook changes. The handbook, as you know, we updated it last year, is extensive. It's a hundred and seventy-six pages long, bringing both the elementaries and Frontier together into one book. It's still sectioned off. It's still got some work, I think. We're talking about probably reducing what, how the elementaries are broken up. But as far as Frontier goes, I highlighted the major changes. The first one being, there's a new portion to the field trip section. We were gonna have contracts, policy and contracts for students traveling that need to be signed off on. The next one is AI and plagiarism. We added new language about AI last year. There is a lot of discussion and work with the teachers right now about AI, how AI is being used in the classroom, and that's gonna be something that we work on throughout the year. AI is moving faster than we can keep up with, but we're trying. This is a appeals and due process thing that we put in place. What's interesting about it is it, a lot of our policies are taken from somewhere. This is something that we created in-house after looking at a couple of lawsuits in the state where students feel like they're accused of cheating, and then the outcome of the cheating caused the schools to be in legal problems. We felt that there really should be a due process that allows students to, if, you know, it's a major assignment, there's cheating, that's not just on this teacher alone to call that out, and then the assistant principal, that can be reviewed, and then that review board can offer other, other things, because AI is going to be used in parts on assignment and not other parts. It's going to get very complicated in some of these classes where you're allowed to come up with ideas, but it's not allowed to proofread, or however the teachers are using it. Having a appeals process allows us to stay academic forward, I believe, and not just be punitive, really look at the details of something if it were to come up. I don't know if I've, if we've created a backlog of a lot of plagiarism, but we don't have a lot of, last year, if we count the number of incidences that ended up in the principal's office, half a dozen maybe, whether or not those would then be appealed, you know, so I don't think it's gonna be too cumbersome, but it also, I think gives it more of a due process in there. So that's the change there. And then the last one has to do with the Supreme Court decision of, where am I got my notes here, of Muhammad versus Taylor about curriculum opting out you know, due to content against either their religion or other reasons. They suggested that we put this in, this was recommended by the attorney to put this into our handbook and to also have an opt-out form that needs to be completed, that really spells out why, what, you know, what is the, you know, where is the disagreement within the curriculum? And then what the alternative curriculum would be put into place. I don't expect a run on this happening, but I do have, and I can share with people who are interested, the legal briefing that we got from our special ed attorney. It's just making sure that we have our stuff in order. Unfortunately, for those who haven't followed the case, it really is looking at, the case was about LGBTQ rights and readings about that, and someone not wanting their child exposed to that, and wanting them to be able to have other curriculum content in that class, and the Supreme Court voted in favor of that parent. So it is a big shock to the system where the school was able to set curriculum, and the Supreme Court is saying that it's falling more and more into the parents' hands. However, I think through good management of this, it doesn't get out of control. And if I look at our opt-out right now, prior to this, opt-out is related usually just to, what we've seen in the past is sex education, where, you know, families could choose not to have their child participate in certain units of the health curriculum. We'd get one or two in a year. Am I right, George? But about one or two, and if that, some years, there's none. So I don't expect this to be, but a, a, a big run on this, but different parts of the nation are seeing bigger runs on this. So if you're following the news and that kind of thing. So this is protecting us in our handbook that we're making sure that we're doing things right. So you do need to vote to accept the handbook for the following, this twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
That's all. If you got bottom bill.
Yes.
Is it easier for you to do?
I got missing.
Yeah, yes.
First and second for voting.
Yep, go ahead. Yep.
Also, we have Bob, Phil, Mary, Leslie, Daphne, yes, Diane. Zilia.
Yes.
Damian.
Yes.
Yes. Are we good lip reading? Yes? Yeah, okay. Thanks.
The next area is policies. So these policies for our new members here, we do a double reading, which means we do the reading this, and then we vote on it next month so that we have time to review it, ask questions, and if you don't have questions tonight, you can also submit them to me, and I can bring them to the next meeting. These were recommended by MASC. They send us a September briefing every year to to either update policies or offer new policies where they see their legal sees things go. So the policies in front of you is KBG, is the Parent Advisory Council. We don't have one of these. This involves, includes CPAC and LPAC for English-language learner students. Sunderland has one of those. The other district, the other schools don't have the population to really support one of those right now, but we could in the future, so it would be good to get that on our books to show that we support that. KBE, relations with parent booster organizations, again, a new policy. There's nothing similar on our books. We have been following this law, because it's the law, but we don't have a policy regarding booster organizations, making sure that they're properly following the state law, if they're associated with the schools. I can go down, I won't go down, more information, we can go on that next time if people have questions on that. EFBA, food, school food and nutrition, talks about meal modifications. This, again, is a new policy. We have free lunch available to all if there are students with disabilities who can't, or disabilities that make certain food offerings that they can't enjoy, and this allows it that we are going to offer modifications for them. And there is a process in there following the state guidance, this is all from the state, following the state guidance on how to put that through so that we can make sure that everybody gets to have a meal that they can, they can have. And there has to be reasons. You can't just say you don't like chicken nuggets today, you know, it has to be reasons within that. The next one is ECA B, access to buildings and grounds. This is a new policy. We have a lot of policies that talk about visitors to school, how to rent the grounds, how to, we don't have one that is just straight access, and so it's recommended to have that in place. And then the last one is JJE, student fundraising activities. There's a new portion, we already have this on the book, but the new portion is that, you know, gambling or games of chance cannot be part of. is that, you know, gambling or games of chance cannot be part of student fundraising. So you cannot do a, play craps for money, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Raffle tickets as well. And that's been the law for the, I asked, I talked to Russ about that because I asked about 50/50 raffles. He said, that's been on the books forever, Darius. The state controls, has a monopoly on gambling. And no one else can do that. So I said, so the 50/50 raffle and stuff, he goes, that's correct. It falls underneath that. This is not a new law.
There is a process that a nonprofit can go to the town clerk and get a raffle permit and they have to pay, you know, like $10. And then pay back 5% of their ticket sales to the lot of commission. So I know this, I don't know if that was.
Pretty much a piece.
Is holders for that for raffles.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's the law prior to this. So, yeah, we're going to have to make a decision on that, whether or not it would be in place of the law, you know? You know, basket raffles, I know we've done that in the past for the DC trip. People don't, I mean, it's a, people donate money, donate, not money, donate, you know, products. And then, you know, people voted for raffle and made hundreds of dollars on that. 50/50 raffle has been at basketball games for years, you know, so.
So just about, just where, you know, parents are working basketball.
So I think if the parent group is an official 501(c)(3), I think it is for a nonprofit, then they can do a raffle because they're not under the jurisdiction of the school district if they apply for the town permit. There's very few of those that address though at Frontier. Handful.
Yeah, I think right now it's football.
Football, baseball.
Football, baseball.
Soccer maybe, but definitely football and baseball.
Right. It's only football and baseball are official ones. Probably should get one, we probably should get one in the arts so that they can do these things. I don't know. Well, we, well, we'll help us, you know, steer to parents who want to do that. All right. So that's a first read. If you have questions, comments, concerns, shoot them to me and we will discuss them and vote them at the next meeting.
The only thing I had was to remind everybody about September 24th. And it was a great event last time we did it. And love to have people there. This extends to not just frontier, but also the elementary school districts as well. Presuming you, oh, sorry, sorry.
No, no, just something to keep on our radar. So a lot of us who've normally gone to the November conference on K-Cod are not able to go this year. I mean, who's, you know, I'm usually the one who's going to be there. So we'll have to do that in the October meeting because we won't have a November meeting.
It's true.
To vote somebody else to, to be part of the solution.
You got that till Sunday?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
It's worthwhile. I think having gone, definitely, definitely go. I just can't. Diane, any committee report?
Yes.
Yeah. So as Darius mentioned before, rural aid over the summer was cut by 25% of the state. Which is a meaningful hit to us. The MTA is organizing a sign-on letter for public officials, including municipal council. It's also for local union president. It's also for superintendent. It's also for select board, city councils, town councils. I'm going to send it out to all of us tomorrow. And I encourage all of you to sign it to show that we are really a strong, broad coalition and says we believe in funding for baseball, public education. And if anybody would like to tell me right now, if you want to name, have this book to be by, they are, I can have to do that for you. Yeah.
Yeah, go for it.
I don't understand what I'm adding, honey. I will send it out as much.
Can you just get a letter from Jessica to get more detail about what it is? But it's applicable for rural aid for the school districts like ours. Any other committee reports? You don't have anything from the collaborative over the summer? Yeah, especially in second thing. You can't do that all. And do you have any other?
No. I have a legal books, if you guys want a legal book from MASC.
Yeah, please take them so he doesn't have to carry them.
They're to carry down. They look great on a coffee table, conversation starter, like, where do you have all, oh, I deal with the. Yeah, exactly.
And we don't have anything going to exist.
We do. But we can be very quick.
All right. So.
I'll make a motion going to executive session.
And not return.
And not return.
Can I elaborate on what we're going into executive session?
Yeah, chapter 38, section 21A, A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation.
Can I make a comment before we do that? Can I just make a comment before we?
I have a motion and did I catch it? Second.
And not to return.
And not to return.
See you later.